The reasons for the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with the greater of the justices are all.
This meeting of the town council being held presented to April thirteenth twenty twenty audience for continuity in the government of Luray. The town of Works should review the names of the council members present and identify those who are electronically present. Town managers for staff will receive a public comments in advance of meeting which may be submitted by email, mail, phone, or hand delivery by five P M on the day of the meeting. In-person attendance and comments by the public is also permitted such to the limitations of the most recent executive order and facing guidelines issued by Governor Northland. This meeting can be viewed live on the town's Facebook page and a recording will be available on the town's YouTube channel. Minutes from the meeting will be posted on the town's website after beginning approval, after being approved by the town council. I'd like to recognize, Coach Cook, Chief Coach here just for a couple minutes, he wants to enter something.
Mayor, Council, recently we've had a position available, Patrol Lieutenant in the Great Police Department. After reviewing personnel files and going over everyone, we have approximately, we've had several qualified candidates. And I was excited about that, about that through the department to have so many qualified guys within our agency. However, there's only one position. First Sergeant Ronnie Foster, been with the Great Police Department for fifteen years and has been performing in a supervisor's role handling several administrative functions during that time. First Sergeant Foster has been a general instructor for more than thirteen years and firearms instructors for the, for more than ten years. With that being said, I have selected First Sergeant Ronnie Foster to be appointed to the rank of lieutenant. This promotion will be effective October first twenty twenty and will be reassigned as a patrol lieutenant effective on that date. And I'd like to bring Ronnie forward and, and, and Ronnie spent his entire fifteen years with, with the Great Police Department.
It's worth a picture, y'all, thank you. Thank you. Congratulations, Ronnie. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Y'all have a good night.
Okay, first item on our agenda tonight.
The town has received a request to consider a preliminary and final plat for lot forty-two A eleven eighteen forty dash seventeen. It's a lot on First Street, it's zoned R four. The request is to subdivide a single lot into two lots that could be developed as duplexes. The planning commission reviewed this application and unanimously recommended approval to council at their September sixteenth meeting. If council has questions, please let us know, otherwise we would add this to your October agenda for consideration.
Any questions, Mr. Mayor, about the subdivision? Excellent, okay, resolution. Let me say this is a big lobby.
Yes, sir, next item on your agenda, the town had received a request for consideration of a resolution that had been passed by the town of Stephen City. The only modification to that resolution was to remove the word common from council. Council had requested that we move this to your agenda tonight for discussion about any other changes that council would, would want to consider.
And my fellow council members, I've, I have some thoughts on this, I haven't had the chance to actually draft something up. I think more importantly, to talk to some numbers from our minority community. I know that this is largely symbolic, it's not gonna have any binding effect, but if we're gonna do it, I think we ought to do something that's, that's true from, from what we believe and true for our communities. If you all would consider that, I'd like to see if I can do something drafted up with some assistance from our, like I said, my, my minority communities as well.
Joey, I'd like to add that, I, I like your idea of having a combined statement, not just accepting something that someone else did, but we talk to your community, we talk to any other community that feels like they have issues and that we do it together.
Yeah, instead of just rubber stamping it from another municipality, you know.
I agree.
Okay.
I'm fine with it.
All right, well, I appreciate it.
Gentlemen, this is a big inequality statement, but we're absolutely glad.
Your, your.
It's not something we need to go for a hall meeting in order to change the language of it. It says something that is based upon equal rights for all town citizens and that's something that I think that as a town we, we want and we advocate for. The only change I would make is that it does not include gender. It does, it did list racial, sexual orientation, it did lack the word gender. That is the only change that I think that we need to make. We have now had, we've now had this request for twenty days and I think continuing to delay it sends the wrong message.
Well, yeah, my, my attempt from our request wasn't to delay anything, but is to do it, I don't know, in a more genuine manner. And, I mean, frankly, a point of order on the document itself, sexual orientation is, isn't always guaranteed in a religious setting, right? So it could be a bona fide reason to not have that actually written quite the way it is, so there's, there are some technical issues with the document itself.
Then this is the place to discuss those and to meet your feelings now about what you think we should not provide equity and equality for, for our citizens. It is not to continue to push this off to a town hall forum.
You would just rather rubber stamp the document from another municipality?
Oh, no, sir, I don't rubber stamp that, I fully believe it through my core, that all citizens of the town of Luray should have equal protection and equality.
Yeah, agreed.
I, I don't disagree with that, I just that, Leah, this is, I guess I wanna talk about it to people before I go with it. You know, you said now's the time to talk about, I'm, I'm a little bit afraid of what we're agreeing to, I don't know what I'm afraid of, but it's something. Are we encumbering the town in doing a program that we haven't had, or, see, I'm not sure what this, what the la, the language says we have to do. It says the town will work to positively heal this system. I mean, that can be taken lots of ways, I guess. That's all I want to discuss. What physical things are we doing after this is passed or not passed?
Yeah.
Cause I don't know.
Yeah, I think you're right, Ronnie, I mean, if we're gonna really engage with, with our community and if this is something that's gonna be more than just a statement that looks good on the newspaper or looks good in the press and actually has something to it of substance, then I think, I don't see this delaying anything, I think it just makes me something real.
So Joey, I need some clarification, so you said that there's some length in this document that you'd like to, can you speak more to that, please?
Well, as, as I started out, I happen to have a chance to actually draft it up and I would want some review of it and, if that's why I would make the request one more time to get it up.
So for the past twenty days, I'm gonna review the document and rewrite it, how you think it should be written?
Well, we're better than this schedule, I mean, yeah.
If, if we may, if, if any changes made, we vote on the next regular council meeting, thank you, she'd write it through Steve to, to legal commission over there, let me write on it.
Yes, sir, we can do that, yeah, I agree.
I still, I just want some other people's opinion besides us politicians.
Me too, yeah, me too, Ronnie, it's not just my thoughts.
That's what I want. Man, I, can, can I ask him, what you guys, have y'all read this document?
No.
Okay, see, somebody does any, or can we post a trial balloon out somewhere on Facebook and get input from the public somehow?
That would have been my question, is how, how do you wanna get the feedback, how?
I, I don't know, I, it's hard to get feedback from people. Only time I get feedback is when it's negative, you know, if somebody's happy, they don't say anything, that's just what happens. So if we could somehow or another get a draft document that we have in front of us that says Stephen City likes, and I like Stephen City, I work up there, they're nice people, and they got a nice resolution, I think, but I wanna see what folks in the town think of it, and I don't know how to get that out besides post it somewhere and, and invite people to send us comments.
We, we can do that, we can, we can request, you know, put it out on social media and ask folks to, to let us know any changes that they would.
And maybe there'll be no changes, who knows?
So it's sort of a virtual town hall almost, is that kind of of sorts, something like that?
Yes, sir.
Or a real town hall?
Let's be really clear, the language says that the town proclaims that discrimination of all types, no matter its base, including discrimination based upon creed, race, color, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, or age have no place in this town. The town of Luray hereby pledges to do its part in advocating and enforcing equal protection of the laws and rights of all citizens and to promote the welfare of this community. This town will work to move forward with the community that has lines, labels, and titles and this intolerance of discrimination. The town seeks to unify all of its people under a banner of equality. There is nothing in this document that is controversial or not living the full intent of love thy neighbor. This is a document that proclaims kind and loving intentions and to ensure that everyone in this town is free and safe from discrimination. It's the first step, and the second step could be the diversity and inclusion classes. I had asked to be on the agenda back in July and August. I think that this is the first step of many and we have already delayed this for twenty days. I think that this is a, a blanket generic statement, just basically stating, we are gonna uphold the laws of the nation. We are not changing anything, we're only affirming that we actually believe in equality.
Mr. Mayor? Council can't take action at, at the work session anyway, so that still gives us a couple of weeks to, to seek public input.
You know, I'm all for public input, but then how do we decide whose input gets included or who's excluded?
That's a big question.
I mean, how, how, I don't know how to do this, or really.
What kind of, what kind of venue we're going to receive the input, I mean, if we're gonna do it on social media, that's fine, but it's gonna, I think you're gonna get an input in a lot of different directions if you put it out on social media. So I would just be cautious about that.
Well, again, if we get these inputs, who's we gonna accept and who's we're not using?
Yeah.
All I'm thinking is, if we get inputs, then it gives us other viewpoints perhaps to discuss, to take in consideration. I'm afraid I'm missing something, I'm gonna leave somebody out, I'm gonna leave out some situations that I don't foresee. And Leah, I can read too, and I, I read that second paragraph, I have no trouble with that. It seems like we do it already. I mean, I'm thinking Bo Cook follows the law just like it's supposed to be and it's enforced fairly. I have no evidence otherwise, so I'm kinda like the Second Amendment thing, when those guys came in, want me to, to give a resolution to talk about guns, and I thought, well, I pursued that one over all the other amendments, and I voted on that one like I did, and you did. So I'm, I'm, I'm not sure what the hurry is, we've had problems, if you think we had problems for a hundred years now, so what's another twenty days gonna hurt to, to think about it and get some input, whichever way we get it.
Again, the question is, how do you get the input?
You ask people, I think, you know, and how do you get any input? You gotta, you put yourself out there a little bit, maybe we could put this statement out as a newspaper article and ask people to contact the town office with comments, and then we have a chance to read those comments.
No problem making a resolution for the constitution every year. We have no problem making that resolution. This is a similar resolution, it is simply upholding the rights of all citizens. Kathy Herbert, who sent this to us back at the beginning of the month, also sent us another email on September fourteenth outlining seven reasons why we should approve this resolution, and I defer you back to that email that she sent us. I do believe that having, quote, citizens' comments on this, why helpful, should not prevent us from wanting to state publicly that we can provide protection and equality for all citizens? And it's not just, let's be very, no one is saying the police doesn't do that. What we are saying is we as a town acknowledge that there are, there is the need to publicly decree this.
Leah, what about our public statement that we made here some weeks back? How does it ultimately differ from, from that? Why was that, why was our public statement inadequate previously?
How was what statement?
The, the public statement from the town, how was, when it was?
The censure?
The, the censure, not only the censure, but the public statement made by the town that said, that the councilman, Herb, he had.
The public statement by the town was not inclusive, this statement is incredibly inclusive and it de, it details corporal items that are important to us, and as Kathy, again, I direct to that email that Kathy sent, she gave seven reasons why this should be what we approve.
Yeah, I read that, I mean, twenty days is not, how long does it normally take us to get things passed? More than twenty days, I would say?
Especially if we have public hearings.
You know, sixty days, gentlemen, not that we need to do that, but, I mean.
What is the big hurry?
So, am I understanding that, that the only change I want to make is to include gender, it does not include gender? That is the only change I wish to see on here? And then are we saying that none of you wish to see any other changes, is that correct?
Don't know. I don't know either, not yet anyhow. I'd like to see what Joey's gonna come back with.
So you're gonna, you don't know what you want to say, Ron, is that correct?
Oh, heck, I hate it when you put me on the spot like this. I don't know what I want, I just know that, I feel like I'm being rushed through this process and I don't like that. That's, guess, that's my biggest complaint. And twenty days is twenty days, Leah, but at the same time, only people I've heard it from is Kathy and you, I haven't heard anybody else's opinion. And I've tried, I talked to my wife about it, and she has her opinion, and we both agree that there's nothing wrong with this statement, but before we make it a resolution, I wanted to get more info, I guess, but then I have to listen to juries and I don't know how you get input, that's a good question.
So gentlemen, I ask, what's the difference between doing a resolution every year for the constitution and doing this?
Looks like everybody's got about fourteen days to think about it, to think about it and get your comments received and we'll do something for next meeting. Okay? Move on. Council agenda, first, Mr. Lee.
Yes, sir, there's been some desire by council to identify what our process for getting items onto the agenda. Working with the town attorney, we've developed a draft code amendment that would basically add an addition or deletion section for, of the agenda to your regular meeting agenda. The process for items on the agenda, if items were brought by the board or commission that had been appointed to the, by the council, either the planning commission or the, the tree board. If there's items that Jason, Mary, or I need y'all's consideration, that we would add those to the agenda, items from the mayor and then items from two or more members of council would then also be added to the agenda. The mayor would continue to have the final approval of the agenda and once published and would bring it to your meeting if there are, if, if there were a need to modify it, council would have that opportunity at the beginning of each meeting.
Mr. Steve, it, uh.
So what is the current policy? Cause I have emailed the mayor and I have not heard back, it's been over a month. What is the current policy to get something on the agenda?
This basically mimics the current policy, unfortunately, when we updated the, the charter and, and modified the code, those policies effectively went away, but we have been following two members of council to add an item to the agenda, and then the mayor has the, the final establishment of the agenda. The, the main new item is just adding a permanent item to the agenda for additions or deletions to the agenda as approved by the, the mayor.
I guess the issue I have to hold, one is that it does seem that there's already cherry picking about what makes the agenda or not. The second is that there's no direct way for citizens to be present on the agenda. So for example, diversity and inclusion class that I've been asking for for the last several months was a direct request of several citizens and I have yet to be able to get that on the agenda, as I've yet to get any council member to agree to put that on there. But gentlemen, my question to you, if we, if we do move forward with this, how do we ensure that citizens' voices are still content, are gonna actually be heard?
Well, I read, number four says general citizen comments. That way they can suggest things to us that we bring to our attention. Is that what you want? Is that what you need? That's already in there. It's, yeah, it's there, we've always had that, I've always been there.
So a citizen comment period does not require us to take any actionable item, we've seen this time and time again in our chamber. What the issue is, is that, I'll just use the one that was recently, again, this diversity and inclusion class was asked, I was asked by several citizens to put this on the agenda. I've made attempts and it's yet to appear. So how, how could we use an agenda to actually do what it's supposed to do, which is to guide us to have productive conversations versus blocking things from coming to the public forum?
You made attempts, more than, more than one attempt on that? Attempts would be plural, just, just to clarify. I saw one time where you put it out there.
I made an email and I also brought it up at the last public town council meeting, at which point Joey, you said you would help me get it onto the agenda.
Did, did you ask me after that? Did you ask me after that, or did you send an email? Cause I'll second, I said that before, because I'm, I'm willing to hear out anything whether I agree with it or not, so.
So does this need to appear on the next agenda?
Boy, if we, it sounds like we got two people asking, then it, it's more than likely it gets on the agenda.
And, and to clarify, with that, we, that was one idea, we were looking for a different ideas of, of something that we could perhaps lose on as a town, I think it's part of a bigger issue, so, to just make it the one thing that we can do, that wasn't really what we discussed previously.
Well, if, if, if council is comfortable with the procedures as presented, we'll include this for consideration on your, at your October meeting. It's my understanding from Jason that this item does not require a public hearing because it is, just, it doesn't require the, the advertising, advertising for a public hearing because it's, it's not, it's not a requirement, but we can definitely consider public input if, if council desires on the, this change to the code.
And fellow council members, I'll just, just to point out, I'm, I'm not trying to set an agenda right now, so don't take, that's not why, cause I don't think that's appropriate for us to be saying, we're gonna put on the agenda for next month, and so, and I don't think that's what's outlined here in our, in the draft.
Gentlemen, if we leave this up, is, my concern is that citizens' comments are not going to be heard and presented to council for agenda discussion items.
Well, as I understand, item four, if we get a writ, if one of us gets a writ request from a resident, then we can get another councilman on board and that will be on the agenda, is that correct?
If this is approved, yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
If this is approved, yes, sir.
And that's handled, that's handled outside of the meeting, that's not handled, I mean...
Correct, agendas are set in advance of the meeting, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
To me, that's, that's, you have them a way to.
And I think, you know, and I think that, you know, there's a process to this, and I'm using a mask, but I can't tell what they're doing on. I don't think anyone's trying to restrict the agenda of things that need to be discussed, but there's a point that you have to control the agenda, you can't have every citizen in the town of Luray coming in and setting the agenda for us every month. You just, it, it's just not effective, you can't do it that way. I mean, what we, what has been the process in the past has been citizens have came to us and made comments, if we thought it was worth moving it to an agenda item, we did that. In this case, it came about with discussions outside of public meetings, it came about with discussions from one council member and a citizen. And to me, that is just not the way that you can set the agenda. I mean, I think that's the purpose of the citizens' comments, to hear what, what people are wanting to air, and then the purpose of the work sessions, if something comes to the work sessions and then falls out of the work sessions, then agenda item for action. I think that's typically the way local government operates, so it's, it's not that we're trying to be restrictive on anything, I think it's just that there has to be a process. And I think what you've outlined here in a lot of municipalities I've worked in, that's the way it's done. I mean, the council has an opportunity at the beginning of each meeting to amend the agenda, all it takes is a motion and a second and a vote from the majority of the council to adj, to amend the agenda, and I think that's what we should do. And I think that gives every council member, if, if they're not happy with the way that the agenda has evolved, it gives them an opportunity at the meeting to make a motion to include something or exclude something or whatever the case might be. Typically, you also have the opportunity to move items off of a consent agenda back onto the regular agenda if you're not happy with it being on a consent agenda. But that is the way local government typically operates, and you can't, in my mind, just have citizens setting your agenda for you without any type, type of process.
So you're, to, to clarify, what you're saying is you would actually remove number four from that and that two, two council members outside of the meeting, this scenario, cannot request it to be put on the agenda, you would say that it should just be a public thing in this public forum?
Well, I, if, if, if two council members wanna get, try to get it on the agenda outside of the meeting, that's fine, I think the ideal way would be in a public forum, though, that way everyone has an opportunity to change the agenda if they wanna change the agenda, so long as you have a vote from the remainder of the council. We can't have one council member setting our agendas, and we can't have citizens setting our agendas on an individual basis, I just don't think we can do that, it's just not the way local government's carried out, so. I don't have a problem, I think this, I think this policy is good. The fourth item about doing it outside of the council meetings, if we're, if we really object to it, we still have the same opportunity at the beginning of the meeting to remove it if we want to, we can make that motion and so long as you've got a second, and a vote from the majority of the council will do so, the item can be removed from the agenda. But to me, it's about the public process, it's about our business being conducted in public, and through a lot of this stuff, people have been responding with Facebook and by email, and comments that we make regarding these things are very important, and I think they're important that we're made in a public forum, and I think it's even better now that this public forum is being broadcast and people can see what we're saying, you see what the individual council members are saying, and you hear it firsthand. It's not emails between two or three council members, which is a violation of FOIA, which I might, which I've got my hands slapped for that before too, but it is, and I think a public agenda, a public arena is a place to play it out and a place to deal with it. And I, I, I think this policy is a good policy.
The airport commission, the, one of the first thing they do is, is somebody has to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Right.
If there's somebody that wants to bring something up, they bring it up, it's voted on, if it passes, you go over, if it doesn't pass, you keep on going.
Otherwise, I mean, otherwise it's pretty never ending, I mean, you're gonna have, every time someone has a pet peeve with an employee or whatever the case might be, or some action that the town has taken, they can automatically come in and get on the agenda, I just don't think that's, that's a question.
Nothing bigger. Nothing big or good.
Which is the point of the citizen's commentary a lot of ways. Where it filters that, creates a filter in a sense.
That's where it's at.
I'm going to work it up. I like what the manager and the lawyer came up with on the media agenda. Like you say, the public thing is good. I mean, we're not taking action this night. We're just discussing, right? I'd say we vote on it next week, next month.
Do you need to have a vote on the agenda itself in here somewhere? The agenda that you present?
Well, the way that it is written, the mayor would continue to set the agenda. Items would get added based on what is included in the code that would be considered by council. The opportunity for council to amend an agenda would then be at the public meeting. If there is an item that council wishes to add, they would have an opportunity to either add or delete an agenda item. And then council collectively would vote and the majority would dictate what action would occur as to additions or deletions.
And so Steve, if we move forward, it's important that we tell citizens that they need to rescind their requests to all council members. I think that's an issue that a lot of requests are committed to me and then there's some people that don't also have them considered during it. So if we do change, as it's really important to listen, know that they're going to need contact more than one council person.
I would agree that probably the best response to any citizen would be come into the public meeting during the public comment and state to the entire council as a group, any concerns that they might have.
And I would also suggest that if they do that, then it does delay for actions that they would like to state by at least a month. But I think that emailing their comments and concerns is fine. I definitely think, you know, this is funny, funny. Let me make sure people can have access however they wish to access us. So I don't think that there's anything wrong with encouraging people to send emails. I just think it's really important that we communicate to citizens that they need to contact more than one council person if this is a citizen request to be on the agenda. Right now, you know, to Jerry Shaver's point, we don't have an issue of too many citizens coming to us wanting things to be on the agenda. The issue is that we have too many citizens coming to one council person and not to the board.
And again, just to clarify, I don't have a problem with citizens emailing me for anything. But I do have a problem if that email results in an action by two or three council members outside of a public meeting because that's in a legal meeting under the Freedom of Information Act.
All right. This is beyond.
Yes, sir.
Halloween, Steve.
Yes, sir. Staff have been working to identify how we can proceed with a Halloween event this year. We have collectively come up with an idea of a trunk or treat at Dean Park. We believe that we could conduct this event in a manner that would meet the intention of the Phase Three guidance as well as guidance from the CDC. We would have vehicles parked in the parking lot. Anyone that is there to provide candy would have to wear a mask. We would strongly recommend individuals have bagged candy in their trunk that the children can come by and pick up. That way, it further limits any interaction between folks that are participating and the children that are participating. The intent would be to have a Halloween event in a controlled environment, Dean Park, that would allow folks to enjoy the festivities of the holiday. We've received guidance today from the CDC that indicates that they strongly do, they strongly recommend minimizing interaction between children and adults this year specifically related to COVID. So the trunk retreat could lend itself to that if council agreed. Our plan, if council gives us a general nod to proceed with this event tonight, tomorrow we would send out through social media and other means a survey, see if people or businesses or organizations would be interested in participating. And if we have sufficient folks that want to participate, we would then advertise a trunk retreat event at Dean Park. The other item that we have, just general Halloween guidance for those that would go door to door trick or treating. Again, if you are at a home and you want to participate, have your porch light on. Have candy bagged, again, so that there's minimal interaction that would potentially lead to a transmission of COVID. Again, wear a mask if you're handing out candy. And basically just try to be safe as we enter the new style of Halloween.
Steve, I have one question. We used to have the costume contest around Dean. We enjoyed choosing the winner. Has there been any talk about how that might happen or is it just something we're going to miss this year?
We've been trying to discuss that.
Okay. That's a tough one.
It's challenging. The thought would be, could we have people send in photos of their children in costumes and then allow council to award? We could. The problem with that would be having either photos sent in advance of Halloween or having photos sent on Halloween and then having council issue awards after Halloween. The timing would be very difficult to achieve.
Sounds like we will miss that part this year.
We did try to work that out. Unfortunately, it's challenging. We could do it if council desires. Again, we could either say, have your children's photos sent to us by the 28th and we could award it on Halloween. Or send us your children's costume photos on Halloween and we'll award it sometime in November.
For me, it was more fun in person.
I would love to see people submit them after Halloween, that way they don't have to dress twice and then give the awards of the November council meeting. But Steve, I think it's a really, you're back from Fairfax County District and told me they were going to give us recommendations for Halloween in December.
They did. And basically, they're following the CDC. The CDC recommends trying to minimize contact as much as possible. They try to, they recommend minimizing events like we would be proposing. However, we believe that by having the candy in the trunk, having it in a parking lot, we would be able to separate individual, individuals. We believe we can provide the community with a safe trunk retreat event, provided we have sufficient participants willing to provide candy to the kids.
Oh man, I was all for this and so you said that they advised it.
Well, what they advise against primarily is indoor events. That's why we chose an outdoor venue. And again, having an outdoor venue, having people separated. Our plan is to have cars not side by side by side, but to have cars every other parking space to basically provide separation, social distance of all the participants. We're also planning to have one-way traffic of children that come in. They follow an established path so that there won't be any cross circulation of the kids as they go through the parking lot.
Steve, back to the costume contest. Could we take pictures of the kids as they come through and then judge it later?
We could absolutely do that as well, yes, sir. We'd have to get their contact information, but we can do that at the event.
Yeah, just say, want to be in the contest, come over and get your picture taken. Get like, Lee Moore says, an ID number. We can do it that night or the next day so and then announce it at the November meeting.
Okay.
Do you have any following local COVID P numbers?
I believe there were 10 new cases in the Lord Fairfax District in the last week or two. I couldn't tell you what the specific numbers in Page County are. I think it may just be two or three, I think, in Page County new cases. It's not a significant number.
No.
But the district does, as part of their advisory, just is asking people to continue being vigilant and wearing a mask and separating when possible.
Are we actually doing the car trunk? I mean, if somebody wants to come up from this little pop-up tent and have a table, would we let them?
Yes, yes, sir. It could be a table. The intent is that. Tailgates are welcome, yes.
Okay. Thanks, Steve.
Okay, let's move on. CARES Act, Bert?
Yes, sir. Staff have been working to identify opportunities for council to utilize the CARES Act funds that we've been allocated. I've been asked by the Page County Economic Development staff, they are requesting each of the towns to consider returning some of the CARES Act funding to go towards their food hub. They are seeing a number of people that are coming to pick up food. And they would like to expand the program if funding is available. So they have put that request out to the towns.
Who is that? Paige, one?
Liz Lewis with the Page County. We've come up with a number of opportunities that council has asked about. First with marketing. We believe, well, Jason has confirmed that CARES Act can be used to market a tourism industry under specific requirements. Talking with Jason, if council desired to do this, we would recommend the town considering a contribution towards either the Chamber or LDI so that they could go forward with marketing. If we give it to an organization with the intent of marketing COVID, the requirements that would be, if we were to do it, we fall under the very specific CARES Act requirements. If we can make a contribution to the Chamber or to LDI, it's less restrictive. So that is the recommendation to council. If y'all want to go that route, would be consider a donation to either of those organizations. The business grant program. We've got the program allocation outlined in your packets. We would propose that a grant be available up to $2,500 for small businesses, $500 for nonprofit businesses and $250 for home-based businesses if they can identify a COVID-related impact to their business. Another item that has been proposed is a basically a contribution towards both the fire and rescue companies to offset expenses that they've had related to responding to COVID issues. Another item would be hazard pay. Staff would recommend consideration of a program that would identify a tiered bonus, hazard pay bonus that is based upon the amount of exposure of the individuals, law enforcement having the greatest exposure and then our administrative, public works and parks and rec staff having the lesser exposure. And then one of the final items that Jason actually identified tonight is that our attorney's time in reviewing COVID-related issues is also a recoverable amount. And Jason has tallied the time that he has spent reviewing and putting forth opinions on COVID items that would be a qualifying item to pursue with the COVID allocation.
On the list that you gave us, Steve, the variable message signs and the digital message signs, what are the ones? Did I miss that? Is there a difference? What's the difference?
Well, the variable are the ones that we had asked for approval last weekend. Those are the three digital signs. The variable messages, we have two of them out now. Those are the signs that, they're basically a trailered. We're looking to get four so that we would have the ability to place them at all entry points into the town to convey emergency messages.
So what's like a standard message board and the other one is something that we can change it?
The three are fixed and the two would be mobile.
And then the CARES scholarship? You've got a list CARES scholarship with LSCC and then another CARES scholarship.
Oh, did I? I apologize. It's the same, same name. Yes, sir.
The second was not the, you didn't go ahead and include the business? Well, that would be approved anyways, that one.
Yeah.
Oh, business scholarship.
I think we really need to look at these employees' Christmas parties that we have each year and it's going to be over 100 people. And I don't know how you can have that in such a system. Maybe instead of having that, give that equally amongst all the employees.
Give what we don't miss?
Give it equally amongst all the employees.
So what we normally spend on the Christmas party could be just distributed?
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Well, that plus, I mean, I think we still should, I think we still should.
I think that's a good idea, but I mean, I think.
We got the CARES Act money. Some of the CARES Act money for the hazardous pay is a good idea as well. Matter of fact, I wouldn't have a problem seeing us increase that some. And I think the employees work through this whole thing and I think it deserves some recognition.
This, the October agenda, why don't we play on there for an action item discussion and act, and that?
Yes, sir. We can, all four items for consideration? Yes, sir. We can definitely do that.
For the small business grant, can you tell me more about the eligibility criteria? The last point that you made, can you help me better understand the reason why no, well, it's a typo, but it should say not a national company or a franchise or a national company. Can you tell me more about your intention?
As I recall, that was actually part of the CARES Act language, primarily because the national organizations were receiving CARES Act funds. The intent was, I think the intent of the small business grant was to be able to benefit those that are in a small business and not necessarily simply reselling products from the larger national companies that most likely already received some benefit from the original CARES Act funds.
So you included the original language, is that correct?
Well, we worked with Jason to come up with this criteria. And I believe that that was one of the stipulations. I can check with Jason on that, but as I recall, that was something that the, was excluded as guidance.
Okay, thank you.
Did I skip what was the money you wanted to talk about?
No, sir. But we can definitely have all of these items for council's consideration and I feel. and I feel, and, and we'll go ahead and, Jason's is low enough that we'll just go ahead and, and put that into the, the county for reimbursement.